We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for August 14th, 2018. We'll call Mr. Beeter.
Layland?
Here.
Here.
Magsman?
Here.
Schwartz?
Yeah, I'm just, do I have telephone?
And White?
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have the agenda received this proposal?
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Public comments, anybody from the public like to comment about anything other than what's on the agenda? CNN, we're moving on to claims and payments. Claims and payments for the county. Susan?
The county's expenditures this week total 441,756 dollars and 70 cents, 441-756.70.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion on any of the items? This resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next resolution to approve the expenditures for Country View Care Facility.
Country View's expenditures that will be paid this week total 65,228 dollars and 46 cents, 65,228.46. We're holding off on paying June and July benefits to the county due to lack of funds.
In that, excuse me, go ahead. Oh, second motion. Susan, that amount that is being held back now is approaching 600,000?
Yes. And they have approximately 600,000 in their account right now. We have payroll coming this week. And so we'll have to assess next week where we're at, if we can pay June benefits.
Thank you.
So is that just right in there then, or what?
I'm sorry.
Are we just carrying it, or what?
It's, it's gonna be a liability on Country View's books until they pay it. And then we'll have to see where we're at as we...
I have a motion and a second on the floor to pay the bills. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning Cathy.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Our bridge crew did finish up their work on Cedar Wapsie Road, so that road is now open. And this was the portion between Wagner Road and Highway 63. That is now open. And we do anticipate that bridge crew moving over to the Butler Road, that's the county line road. This would be between West Fork Road and Beaver Valley Road on the western county line. Moving over to that location probably later this week and then getting started in full, full mode, probably Monday. We want to get that bridge open. It is important to the school district, of course, and to residents in that northwest portion of the county, particularly since the Finchford Road Bridge is, is closed. So we're, we're hopeful that that work will take just three, three weeks and possibly by the second week in September or thereabouts that that road will be, the bridge will be reopened. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Well, all the schools have been notified that there's gonna be some...
We, I will talk to the school district probably in the next couple of days just to give them, give them an update. They, they were notified when we, this was the bridge we, you closed because the large, the heavy loads wouldn't stay off the bridge. And so to prevent further damage, we closed it several months ago. So I'll talk to Cedar Falls School District later in the week.
And you're working with Butler County?
Yes. Yeah, we've been working with that engineer and they've been helpful with some of the detour routes, detour traffic going on from the Finchford Road Bridge project. And so we've been coordinating our efforts to get dust control to the people impacted by both those closures.
The road improvements through Doar, have you received any feedback? We had an opportunity to go over that road. It appears to be, I mean, a vast improvement. I guess, have you gotten feedback?
Yes, that project is complete now as well. We've received feedback from just a few residents that, that it looks nice. There was some desire for us to have done more in that, the community as well, more for drainage purposes. And I think we talked, I did talk to you earlier this year about why it wasn't feasible to do more. We didn't want to raise the road, of course. Didn't want to make the flooding situation any worse by raising the road. Or we, we left the road exactly the same height as it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think the road was the issue. It was the ditches and drainage.
Well, they're not really that good at ditches down there.
No.
Yeah, and I explained to you how the railroad was their vital part of this, of that war.
Have they cleaned that out? Have they ever got that all cleaned out?
No, to my knowledge, the railroad left the, the, left it the way they did when they came and replaced the crossing last year with, there's a lot of concrete in their, in their right of way. And it looks, it doesn't look very nice, but it's in their right of way.
Thank you Cathy.
Thank you.
Any other department heads, elected officials? Moving on to minutes approved for August 7th, 2018.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We got hearings coming up, 905, or 13 million, 485,000 dollars worth of GEO bonds. Then we have a 907 ordinance, number 77-212, rezone request by Michael Carmazin. 909 ordinance, number 77-213, request by Beverly Shaper. 911 ordinance, 77-214, rezone request by Arnold De La Gardell. 913 ordinance, 77-215, rezone request by Wayne Satterly. Those will be at the end of the meeting. Next is consent agenda by resolution.
Some move. Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on any of the items? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is contracts and agreements. This is the resolution at the release and termination of current release, or current lease agreement between Blackhawk County and Manatron Thompson Reuters Business by mutual agreement of both parties effective May 1st, 2018.
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion on this item?
You want to comment on it at all, Kim?
Yeah, I was thinking that this had been addressed earlier, but Dina asked to make sure that we put it on the agenda formally. I think that we did discussion, possible board action at the time, so just a cleanup thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is other business. This is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received from A&amp;B Construction Limited, Harper Iowa, for the purchase of Elk Run Salt Storage Hoop Building with a bid of 30,882 dollars to be approved, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
Some move.
Second.
Good morning again. So as you know, we have hoop buildings. These are storage buildings that we store our sand and salt mixture. And we do have one of those at our main facility at, at Longfellow. We also have one at our facility in Laporte, on the, in Laporte, excuse me. This, this latest salt shed would be at our Elk Run shop on Elk Run and Dunkerton Road location. We found it beneficial to have salt and sand right close to the, where the employees have to put the sand and salt on the actual routes, rather than have to drive all the way back to Longfellow. That's, you know, wear and tear on our equipment. It takes their time to do that. We found that to be beneficial to have it close to the, where they need to apply it. We did budget, in this year's budget, FY19 budget, for 52,000 dollars for a new hoop building. And this was the entire project, the, the storage building, the asphalt pad, some electrical work. We send out RFPs for just the, the hoop structure itself and then the concrete bunker walls. We received three bids, all back from three Iowa companies. One of them had done our past two buildings. The low bid was received from, from A&amp;B Construction for the 30,822. This was under the portion that we had budgeted specifically for the hoop storage building of about 31,000. So what I, I would ask that you take their low bid and we be allowed to continue with this, this project.
Who does Elk Run serve then? Grad? What areas?
So it would do the north central portion of the county as well as the northeast portion of the county?
What about the main one?
Longfellow? Those trucks are going to the northwest portion, like Finchford, west of Cedar Falls.
And we've always had those on different locations? The sand buildings, the hoop buildings?
We've always had, at Longfellow, we've always had the, the salt dome. And that, as you recall, that hoop storage building is about five years old. So that's when we started being able to, to pre-mix it, to mix it, and then to just store it. And then every, everyone used to go to Longfellow to get that sand salt mixture.
You have questions, Tom? Do I have a motion on this?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct to chair to sign for same. One plotter scanner for 5,250 dollars from Rapids Reproductions to be used in the Engineers Department.
Some move.
Second.
Is this replacing one?
Yes, we are replacing our current large plotter. And as I told you in the email, we do do a lot of maps, charts. Over the years, we've done those for the Sheriff's Office to help with the missing persons cases, for example. We've also made maps or diagrams for the county attorney's office so that they can be used in cases, for example. And we, of course, have made different maps for different departments here at the county. And we're still, we still would like to do that. We're willing to do that. We've been converting all of our files, all of our paper files to digitals. And we have several large maps left that need to be scanned. I know there's a lot of other large items in the courthouse that people would be free to use that scanner to, to help them get their files electronic.
So is the old one gonna be, this is gonna replace it and we're not gonna have that one anymore?
Yes, we would replace this one.
How old is it?
It's at least, at least 10 years old. And the parts are becoming difficult to find. And so we did send out an RFP for vendors, replied, and we would like to purchase the, the low bid from Rapids Reproduction.
Any other questions for Cathy? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, the resolution at the taxes due and payable of the submitted purses is indicated, including special assessments and rates or charges, including interest, fees, and costs in accordance with the provision 427.9 of the Code of Law will be suspended and the future property taxes, property owned by these persons be suspended.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. This is a resolution at the letter of support for the REAP grant application filed, filed with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources for Clay Street Park Water Quality Project in Cedar Falls be approved and direct to chair to sign for same. Who's here to explain that?
I can give some information for it. I was gonna say, a couple of weeks ago, the REAP committee met and they were reviewing applications. Typically, we have several that are submitted. This year, there was only one. It was the Cedar Falls project for water quality. And I think I provided some information. It was about the permeable paver system and the installation of two bioretention cells. And as the only project, they were asking us to for letters of support, so conservation and...
So they're gonna take out Clay Street Park?
No.
They're not gonna have a play?
No, they're, they're gonna have everything there. It's just that it's gonna be treating polluted storm water.
Where's the retention?
And their... The retention?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, they call those bioretention cells. I, I was gonna say, they probably showed those and demonstrated them. I don't have all that technical information from the application, but...
So who made the request?
The city of Cedar Falls for their application.
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, any further discussion? This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is, it's 916, this is 916 hearing on the proposed application of excess bonds proceeds of 13 million, 485,000 dollars to general obligation bonds. This is a motion received and placed on file, proof of publication and notice of public hearing. Tom made motion, yeah.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to close hearing after all written comments are received. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Second.
Oral comments?
Susan, you want the public to know what this is?
Yes. So basically, what we're doing is shifting a project. We issued bonds in 2015 and then again in 2017 for capital improvements. And one of the projects in 2017 was the remodeling of the courthouse ceiling and lighting on the three floors, first, second, and third floor. We have remaining funds from our 2015 bond proceeds that we need to spend down. And we are basically shifting the courthouse ceiling project that we were planning to use 2017 bond proceeds. We're gonna use the 2015 bond proceeds. But because we, in our original hearing, our not to exceed amount was not enough to cover that project, we need to have another bond hearing that we're having today to, to have that project added to the 2015. And then we still have several projects remaining in 15 and 17. One of them this year was the Pine Crest Bathroom remodel. So we will determine after some of those projects are either completed or, or get contracted, what excess funds will have remaining after that and decide at that point what we need to do with those funds. So, so this is just moving the courthouse ceiling project over to the 2015.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion and a second on this?
Close the hearing, yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the application of not to exceed 420,000 dollars of excess bond proceeds of the GEO Bonds Series 2015A for the foregoing expanded essential county purposes.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? This, oh, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 907 hearing or hearing on a proposed ordinance number 77-212 Carmazin rezone. Motion to close, and motion received and placed on file, proof of publication.
Some moved.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on August 3rd, 2018 in the Water of the Courier.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion on this. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
Oral comments?
Okay. Yeah, this is a request rezoned approximately 2.01 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District for the purpose of building a new single-family home. It addresses northwest of 5675 West Mount Vernon Road.
Do we have this, excuse me, okay. We have it coming up on the screen.
Yeah, we're waiting for it to come up on the screen. Here it is.
Okay, sorry. Okay. And it was moved by Schwartz and seconded by SAC to approve the request rezoned approximately 2.01 acres from A Agricultural District to Agricultural Residential District for the purpose of building a new single-family home. Motion to approve carried unanimously. The, the area has been zoned agricultural district since the adoption of zoning ordinance in 1982. The median area consists of rural homes and farmland. The surrounding area is zoned AR Agricultural Residential District to the north, agricultural district to the south, and A Agricultural District and agricultural residential to the east and west. None, none of the property is located in the FEMA floodplain. The site had a very low lease score, 167. The applicant simply wishes to rezone 2.01 acres from A Agricultural District to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to build one new single-family home. The site also meets the requirements for the AR Agricultural Residential District by being greater than 1.5 acres in size and wider than 150 feet. The applicant is also submitting a separate minor plant application. The technical review committee did not have any concerns regarding this request.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Was there anybody in opposition that night?
No.
Seth?
No, no, we've not heard any, or received any opposition for the...
You got city water out there?
I haven't, I haven't looked into that yet. We were just waiting for the approval process to go through. If need be, we'd get a well. I'm Mike Camenzin, so...
You're gonna live there?
Yep, yep, correct, me and my family.
All right. All right. Yep, I have concerns about not having fire hydrant out in the area. You don't seen too many rural fires here lately, especially building something new.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's the only question I have. Frank, do you have anybody else got any questions for you?
No, I guess it would have to be a rural water supplier, but it's any city water in that area?
No.
No.
Yeah, I would imagine, I think maybe, I'm just guessing, maybe Center Street has city water and it doesn't turn down West Mount Vernon Road.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to close hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend the rules.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. This is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance adoption, that ordinance, many ordinance number 36 be amended.
Second.
Amended. Moving to second, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 909 hearing and it's now 918. On the hearing proposal, ordinance number 77-213, Shaffer rezone. Motion received and placed on file, proof of publication and public hearing.
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published in August 3rd in the Courier.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file. Written comments, Grant, on this one?
No, sir.
You're up.
Hi, Board. Tim Mandera with the County Planning and Zoning. The property's at east, or east 928 West Griffin's Road. They want to rezone 2.11 acre, 2.11 acres from A to AR to build one new single-family home. At the July 17th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there was recommended approval unanimously for the request to rezone. Land use surrounding it is mostly agricultural, fields with nearby hog, or I believe it's a hog confinement facility at 601 West Griffin's Road. Future land use map does designate the area as resident, or excuse me, agricultural. Proposed area would not be in conformance of such designation, but the rezoned area is not taking out any land from crop production. Request would meet the requirements of the AR zoning lot size and lot width. Property did have a high lease score of 270 out of 300, which is considered ag value. But as I noted, the area where the home would be built is currently filled without buildings and they will not be taking any rural crop production out, so...
Will those buildings remain, or?
I believe, yes, they will remain.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Was there any opposition?
No opposition heard.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All in favor, aye?
No, motion, yeah, motion to close. We didn't have one, yeah.
Second.
Well, moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend the rules.
Some move. Second.
Moving to second, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is an ordinance adoption, ordinance submitting number 36.
Second.
Moving to seconded, this is a resolution, please answer your name as called.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a 911 hearing on the proposed ordinance number 77-214, De La Gardell rezone. It is now 927. Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
Some move.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published in, on August 3rd in the Courier.
Second.
Moving to seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file. Written comments on this one, Grant?
No, sir.
You're up again.
All right. The request is at 6343 Waverly Road. They wish to rezone 4.19 acres from A to AR Ag Residential and a half acre from RS Residential Suburban to AR, allow for the construction of three new single-family homes. The Planning and Zoning Commission on July 17th recommended approval of the request on a three to one vote. Property has been zoned RS and agricultural district since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 1982. The future land use map does designate the area, or this property, as residential and the request would be in conformance with that designation. All land in the north, south, east, and west is also designated as residential in the future land use map. Site had a lease score of 208, which is moderate agricultural value and LE component of 85 out of 100. Proposed lots would meet the requirements of lot size and lot width for the AR Ag Residential District. And lot sizes would range from 1.51 acres to up to 1.67 acres with lot widths of 165 feet. So staff is not aware of any opposition to the request.
Access to Waverly Road?
Uh, yes, they're planning to have, an ingress egress easement coming off of Waverly Road to serve the lots in question. The easement will be 50 feet wide, which does meet the requirements, the zoning ordinance, for access to those many parcels.
And it goes down through those parcels, or?
It goes along the southern edge of those parcels.
So it doesn't impact the acreage of those parcels?
Pardon?
It doesn't impact the building size acreage of those?
No.
Lots?
Yeah, I have a question. There, I saw it was noted in the minutes in the information you provided too, but there's a small portion of that property that's vacant and left agricultural. Is there a reason for that, or?
According to the surveyor for... According to the surveyor for applicant, that area is reduced to prevent from being allowed to have a fourth home to be able to put in. And I believe the surveyor's here, he probably could maybe answer a little better than I could, but that was the purpose I understood for it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
What board member voted against it?
Yes.
What was concerns?
She did not specifically state her concerns.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to close the hearing.
Motion, motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. This is a resolution to suspend the rules, consider the vote and proposed ordinance at two priorities.
So moved.
Moved in second. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Magsman?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Ordinance adoption, amending ordinance number thirty-six is amended, subsection two fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yeah.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Magsman?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a nine thirteen hearing, is now nine thirty-one, on proposed ordinance number seventy-seven two fifteen, Saturday Rezone. Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to re, uh, waive the first hearing?
So moved.
Or first reading, sorry. Moved in seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
Okay, yeah, this is.
Any written comments?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, yeah, this is a request rezoned point three one acres from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District to allow for the construction of a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure for a commercial business located at eight four three six Barclay Road. It was moved by Sage and seconded by Nagel to approve the request to rezone point three one acres from A Agricultural District to C Commercial District to allow for the construction of a two thousand one hundred and sixty square foot accessory structure for commercial business, with the condition that restricts, restricts the property to use as a boat cover manufacturing business. Motion to approve carried unanimously. The point three acres has been zoned agricultural since the beginning of the zoning ordinance in nineteen eighty-two. Rezone area is currently zoned agricultural district and consists of agricultural grain bins, two steel buildings that are forty-two by seventy-two, and three thousand twenty-four square feet, and twenty-four by fifty-two, one thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet in size. Surrounding area consists of rural homes and agricultural land in the zone A. The rezone area is designated as agricultural in the future land use map, a component of Blackhawk County future land use map. And the properties in north, south, east, and west are zoned agricultural as well. Property is not located in a flood hazard area. Essentially, the applicant wishes to rezone the point three acres. They need additional storage for their home occupation boat cover business. The site is seventy-eight thousand eight hundred square feet, which allows for point zero six square footage of that, which is only four thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet worth of accessory structures. And the lot currently has already four thousand two hundred and seventy-two square feet worth of accessory structure. And the addition of a new building will bring that up to six thousand forty-two, thirty-two square feet. Fortunately, the cloud, the code does not allow home occupations to have more than six percent lot maximum for accessory structures per zoning ordinance. However, rezoning the site to commercial will enable the applicant to exceed the six percent lot requirement. The property has a lease score of two fifty-five out of three hundred, which is considered high agricultural value. However, the site is, you know, is, is a, not, not conducive for, for farming and no, no land's gonna be taken outside of agricultural production. They plan in putting this building in between the two existing buildings, and it's not gonna take any, any agricultural land out of production. Meeting one of these criteria should not constitute approval, as each request will be reviewed and evaluated based on individual circumstances. It should however be noted that the land where the new accessory structure will be placed is an area that's not compatible for farming due to small size and shape, and has not been in agricultural production for the last fifteen years.[1588.53]